This time I'll turn it over to Dr. Akerson.
Thank you Chairman Carroll. As we look at the school reopening recommendations tonight for the Board, this past week a joint letter was issued to superintendents and school board members which was signed by the Governor Roy Cooper, Dr. Mandy Cohen, Secretary of the Department of Health and Human Services, State Superintendent of Public Instruction Catherine Truitt, and State Board Education Chair Eric Davis encouraging districts to reopen for in-person instruction using the latest guidelines from the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services. This call to action was based on ongoing research including a study just released in North Carolina that has shown that school settings have low rates of transmission even with high rates of community transition when strong preventative measures are in place. Furthermore, there are growing harms to children that are out of school and relying solely on remote instruction including negative impacts academically, students' mental health, as well as concerns about food insecurity. In addition, Senate Bill 37 which has also been introduced and has made progress over the past few days which if passed would direct districts to reopen for in-person instruction using the most recent North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services guidelines. We have heard from parents on both sides of this issue. Some who have legitimate concerns about their child not being able to attend school in person and are concerned over the academic progress and social emotional well-being. We have others who would prefer that their child remain on remote learning. The Department of Health and Human Services guidelines provide for Plan A which is minimal social distancing for elementary students and Plan B which is maximum social distancing of at least six feet required for middle and high school students. Based on these considerations, I am requesting approval tonight of the following recommendation concerning reopening schools in our district. On February 15th which is already a benchmark date from our original reopening plan approved in December, elementary schools would reopen under Plan A with students having the opportunity to attend school four days per week, those days being Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday with all students being remote on Wednesdays with deep cleaning taking place in schools. In addition, middle schools and high schools would reopen under Plan B with students having the opportunity to attend in-person either Monday, Tuesday, or Thursday, Friday with all students being remote on Wednesdays with deep cleaning taking place in school. The reason for the AA/BB schedule in element, excuse me, in middle and high school is the required social distancing that is still mandated for this age group and the appropriate spacing that's required to fulfill this obligation. Parents would still have the option both elementary, middle, and high for their children to remain virtual if they choose for the remainder of the academic year. The district would still have the ability to close classrooms or grade levels or even schools based on any COVID exposures and the availability of staff. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time the Board may have based on this recommendation.
I have a question, Dr. Akerson.
Yes, sir.
Um, have you completed the surveys to figure out how many kids are coming back?
We are still in progress with the surveys now. Uh, the survey did ask all possible situations of four days, five days, A or B, and virtual. Uh, so, uh, right now we're still getting information from families on their preference. Uh, but you know, those have not been finalized. That will be finalized as of Wednesday. And then again, that was in preparation for the pending legislation that was coming as well as getting prepared for the February 15th. This learning, uh, method that we is proposing tonight is the same we had before Christmas.
Correct. Now, if, if there's a low number of students wanting to come back in the middle and high school ages, um, can't we social distance enough to bring them back under Plan A?
Yes, sir. We would have to evaluate that, uh, to see how many students that would be to attend in person. Uh, that's the, the unknown right now. Uh, as it relates to elementary, we don't have, uh, the required six feet social distancing because that's what the new guidelines state. Uh, but for middle high, it does get a little more complicated. It would depend a lot on, like you said, how many, uh, would want to come back four days. Uh, and then in terms of, you know, class schedules and what they may look like. And that's for high school, obviously, that's based on periods and courses. But it is something that could be looked at, evaluated, that the Board could consider additionally once we have that information to potentially look at that if we were able to do that. One challenge with, um, middle and high as well is that we are required for the social distancing on the bus. That would be one student per seat unless they're siblings. Uh, and then, uh, operating four days depending on a number, uh, we would potentially have to look at those buses that were doing meal delivery now and that may change that process. So, it, again, it's dependent upon what that data shows after Wednesday, uh, in terms of evaluating middle and high school. Could they safely social distance and follow the guidelines and potentially come back four days? But as of now, we feel like that, uh, we, we could do the AA/BB schedule, the blended for Plan B at this time based on where we were before Christmas.
Yeah, I'm with you. I'm, I, I, I want to do the plan that you recommend, but I, I do want us to look at possibly going back to Plan A if we can, if we can do it. My main worry is, is our teachers. Our teachers are having to do, you know, in-person, to have them do virtual and it's, they're, I'm telling you, it's wearing on them. I know we've had a number of teachers, uh, resign here lately and, you know, I just don't want that trend to continue.
Yes, sir.
Either get back the closest as normal as we, as we can, uh, to take some of the pressure off these teachers and to get students back in, uh, to be back as normal as possible as well.
Sir, I agree. And we're hoping as we progress and we can evaluate this data to see where we are. And as we have this promise of the vaccine potentially coming, that's also going to help us as well. So, um, that's something we definitely want to consider because I think everyone really wants to be somehow to get back to a regular academic year. So, I commend our teachers and staff. They've done a lot, uh, this year in a lot of different ways. Um, and it's been a complicated year, uh, and with cause of the pandemic and the different learning methodologies that we have to provide for them. Uh, but I agree with you. Uh, we'll definitely evaluate that. It's something we can always bring back to the Board if we're able to accommodate that. One thing about doing four days is and only just having the deep cleaning in the, in the middle of the week, but also it gives that remote learning day so staff could reset, uh, and prepare. Uh, I think that provides a lot, more than just for deep cleaning. It also, uh, provides that, uh, day there in, in order to plan especially when you've got two alternating groups of students coming in, uh, and also trying to follow safety protocol as well.
I gotta say something, uh, Dr. Akerson.
Yes, sir.
We cannot base this off, we cannot base this semester off the last semester because things are worse this semester than it was last semester. I mean, we've had eight, uh, school personnel over here at Clark and Discovery, one had it and the rest of them had to be quarantined. We just had a, a whole football team. One person had it and the whole football team had to be quarantined. And another thing, we're trying to bring these students and teachers back, but nobody's been vaccinated. What, what are we gonna do about our staff and our teachers and our students when nobody's been vaccinated? I, 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 to be honest with you, I agree, I recommend that we don't even come back this year. We, we need to make sure that everybody that comes back to school is vaccinated, especially our teachers and school personnel. We need to make sure that they are vaccinated and that, and that may not hap- happen until probably April or May. But I, I recommend we don't, we don't even come back until August when we can give it a handle on this thing. We don't have a handle on this thing right now. And, and that, and bringing us back now, that, that would not be safe for our, for our teachers or school personnel or even our students. Every week, every week since, um, since the Christmas break, it's been one group after another that had, that had either had COVID or the whole group had to be vaccinated. So, to bring these kids back right now? No, I don't recommend that. I just recommend that all our teachers get vaccinated, then let's think about bringing our teachers and students back.
Thank you, Mr. Stinchcomb. There's a lot of concerns around that and obviously coming back and, and, uh, looking at, uh, vaccine availability. Uh, I know that is definitely something. Uh, one thing that, um, we have that's pending, if Senate Bill 37 does pass, uh, districts will have to offer some type of in-person instruction. So, as of now, I think it's on the calendar to be voted on this week potentially or at least to go to the next phase. So, again, that's up in the air. We don't know right now, uh, what the fate of that bill is going to be. Uh, but I know with, with that bill, uh, if it does pass in its current language, districts are gonna have to open for in-person and then we would not have any options at that point. At this time, the Board does still have the option at their pleasure and obviously, uh, my staff and I would do, uh, whatever the Board's pleasure is at this time to support our district in the best way we can.
Uh, Mr. Akerson, Gabe Rota.
Yes, sir.
They, 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 uh, House Bill nine, I mean, House Bill 37, they said they'll vote on it tomorrow, right?
I think it's the third reading tomorrow, Mr. Rota. I could verify that, but I think it is the third reading tomorrow.
I'm hitting at it. I'm looking at it, Mr. Akerson. I'm looking at it right now.
Okay.
Uh, do, do we have, you know, uh, Biden's team, uh, they have information also and data on, on, on schools. Have any of, have any of us looked at that?
You cut out, Mr. Rota. Who was that you said before that had the data?
Biden, uh, President Biden.
Uh, we have not received anything additionally outside of our current guidelines from the, um, President's Administration at this time. I know that there is a, there is a move from just general, uh, news that they want to try to support students come back and provide resources to schools. Uh, but we have not received any directives from the Department of Education specific to COVID at this time.
Well, you know, I, I've been keeping up with that also and they were saying something like, you know, the high school students and, 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 uh, and, and the sports, uh, you know, their, their data was like, wasn't good, you know, compared to people in K-28.
And I think that's a lot of what the DHHS is with the older students. There appears to be more transmission than the younger students, which I think that's why they've been more restrictive, uh, specific on the middle and high students than they have elementary in the DHHS guidelines. They have a more flexibility on the elementary side than they do middle high.
And, and, and Miss, uh, Miss Duncan on the line, she couldn't make it?
Uh, she, uh, she is not a servant. Nurse Lanier is still here at the Boardroom and I'm sure she'd be happy to answer any questions as well from a health perspective.
Where?
Okay.
Did she want to respond?
And actually, uh, Mr. Rota, uh, Nurse Lanier said Ms. Duncan did send her some information if you, uh, if I could at this time have her share this, uh, specific to Mr. Rota's question. Nurse Lanier?
Thank you, Mr. Rota. Uh, Dr. Duncan did share with me the updated Bladen County COVID, um, update from February the 8th, 2021. The percent positive today is 9.1%. Um, she said that is down from two to three weeks ago where we had approximately 14 to 15% positive. Um, currently we have 11 in the hospital, um, recovered 2,490, and deaths 35. Um, compared to the state rate on the percent positive which is 8.6, um, current hospitalized 2,339, recovered 683,697, and deaths 9,991. And, um, percent number of positive cases, um, for Bladen County, we currently have 223 active and for North Carolina,
Oh, Nurse Lanier, if, 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 uh, if high school students ha- have transmission like adults, then do you think we should send them back to school?
Um, I, Mr. Rota, that's a tough decision. It's a tough question. I follow the guidance out of the updated February 2nd, um, Strong Schools document that you have received as well.
Mr. Carroll, I have another question too. We were sent an email by, uh, some ventilation company. Uh, did you receive that email?
I did.
Uh, I'd like to know what you guys thought about it, all you guys that received it.
I would think that a ventilate, uh, I think that a ventilation system like that would work in, in newer schools, but as old as our schools are, I don't know that it would, Mr. Rota.
But, well, we're not, we're not experts on that though, are we?
No, I didn't, no, but you asked my, my opinion and, uh,
Well, I, you, you know.
Right, I understand.
That's what, what I'm saying is, when, when I say you're not, we're not experts, I'm saying, should, should we, should we try, try to get some expert opinion on it?
That's entirely up to the Board, Mr. Rota. Um, uh, and again, you, um, I don't know, like I said, that's up to the Board, uh, how they, how they want to, uh, proceed in following that. But I, I just want to touch bases right here. I know we haven't even, uh, got a motion on the floor yet, but, um, from the phone calls that I have received, um, I, I don't think that we have come to the time now that we need to get these kids back in school. We need to get them back in the seat. Uh, uh, we know that their grades are slipping. We know that socially they're, they're, um, missing out. Uh, I know that was one of the things that we used to get the athletics, uh, back into play, but, um, the phone calls that I have gotten from parents is not being to keep them out of school, but to at least get them back into school some so that they can get some kind of structure from these teachers because they need it. Uh, they're failing in their grades. They're not able to keep up and, uh, it seemed to where that yes, we were going for the, uh, the elementary, we were going four days, but, uh, the kids were able to keep up with that. They were able to, uh, transition with that. Also, um, uh, you listen to the high school parents as well that has contacted us, um, even though it was two days, uh, they were in favor of that because they knew their kids needed that structure. They needed that help that they could get one-on-one with their teachers while they were in class. So, um,
I, I agree, I agree. I agree with you, but, but I agree with you. But at the same time, if the state mandates it tomorrow or the next day of the next week, then should we delay this until they mandate it?
I, I think that, um, with Dr. Akerson's, um, uh, request that he has on the floor, I think we need to take this into consideration. We need to see if it will, uh, even get a motion or if it will pass. But again, every day we, we hold off is a day that these kids are, again, losing. And I, I understand about the teachers. Uh, I hope that we can keep the social distancing going with the teachers until we can get their, get them vaccinated. I understand that. But our kids are suffering. Uh, i- if you've had a parent calling you about it, uh, and, and we've got to do something. Uh, it's come to the point to where we have got to, to step up and say, yes, let's try to get them in the classroom sometime. Let's not wait. Because again, if you listened to the Governor, uh, when he spoke the other day, uh, there's a good possibility that it would pass, but because of, uh, some of the protocol, uh, he may not even pass it. He may veto it. So, you know, every day we wait is a day that we're, um, putting these kids further and further back. And again, that's just my opinion. So, um,
Yeah, but even, 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 even if he vetoed, we still have that option, Mr. Carroll.
Uh, we, we have that option and, and we're taking that option, uh, fixing to take that option to a vote whether or not we want to go ahead and do it now or not. And, um, if nobody else, let, let's just call for a motion. I call for a motion. Um,
I need to speak.
Well, let's just see if we can get a, a motion first and a second, and then we'll have the time to discuss it.
I would like to speak, Mr. Roger. You let everybody else speak. I'd like to have my side.
Go ahead.
We approve Dr. Akerson's, uh, recommendation.
I've got a motion on the floor, uh, to approve Dr. Akerson's, um, recommendation. Do I have a second?
Second, Alan West.
I have a motion by Mr. Tim Benton and a second by Mr. Alan West to, uh, reopen the school. I open it up for discussion now the way it should be. And I turn it over to you, Mr. Dennis Edwards.
Thank you, Mr. Roger. Um, yes, um, I've listened to the community. I, I've listened to the Governor. I've looked at the statistics filed. I've looked at charter schools. I've looked at, I've looked at private schools. I see no reason, no reason at all from my constituents, the community, the people I represent to try to go to Plan A. I want to try to amend this vote somehow to go to Plan A to try to get these kids what they need. We're, we have the authority to do that and I wish people would step in and try to do that. It's, it's been a very strenuous thing on everybody and we need to do something now.
Well, I don't know, but will you go for it?
Well, can I, can I answer his question first, Mr. Rota?
Sure. Uh, I didn't know you answered it, but no.
Yeah, Mr. Edwards, I think we are going to Plan A for, uh, K through, um, K through four, but five through 12, uh, the reason why we do not go to Plan A with that is because of the social distancing that we have to have in the classroom. And that goes back to what Mr. Alan West was talking about, that if we can, once we get the number of students that are coming back in the, uh, middle and high school, if it gives us the opportunity to open it up to the four days, then we can do that. But we need to see how many students are coming back and how many are not.
Okay. I would love to have that information as quick as possible. Thank you, Roger.
Thank you, sir. Go ahead, uh, Mr. Rota.
With, uh, you know, you know, the fight here is between, about the teachers and the students. The fight is, the fight is, is the teachers been, uh, tested COVID. They, they haven't ta- they haven't taken any shots. Uh, and they're the ones that's getting sick. I, I'd just like to know how many teachers do we have that had COVID in this, in this, uh, in this pandemic? And, and also, uh, I'd like to know how many of them are resigned, has already resigned, you know, because of it.
Uh, I don't know that we have, Dr. Akerson, do you have any information on how many teachers have resigned due to the COVID?
Uh, we do not have, no, sorry, do not. At this point, we'd have to, obviously, you know, when some folks get their resignation, they don't necessarily specify the reason for their resignation. So, they don't always say that I'm resigning because of X, Y, Z. Sometimes these, uh, resignations may be just general or it could be a retirement of someone, but usually they do not state a specific reason like that based on what we've seen in this town.
Any more, any more discussion?
Yes, uh,
He asked a question about how many teachers had COVID.
Uh, he, um, do, do we have that?
Uh, and look, Mr. Newt, just looked at our dashboard. I have approximately 100 staff members that have tested positive for COVID. And that's been since the beginning in,
Since June.
Since June, from June to present.
But at the same time, Mr. Rota, we have to take into consideration not all of these positive cases from the teachers came from students.
I, I understand that, um, I understand that, uh, Mr. Carroll, but yeah, they, they take it to, to o- other teachers and bus drivers and kitchen workers and, you know, that's, uh, I understand. But you know, I, I'm an advocate.
Mr. Corey.
It's just that, you know, it's, it's, it's more dangerous in high school and, and that's, 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 that's the data.
Great. I yield to you, Mr. Corey.
Um,
Dr. Akerson?
Yes, sir.
Um, would you, would you, would you recommend sending your kids back to school in this pandemic?
I think that, again, that's a decision that each parent's gonna have to make on their own, um, based on their own personal convictions, their readiness. Everyone has different situations. I, I think that, uh, given all that has come out from what the Governor has shared, the pending bill, there's been, it's been publicized that there's a high possibility for districts to open up for in-person instruction. And I believe that them stating that parents would have an option to continue remote as well through the year, it does put that decision back on parents themselves to choose, uh, whether they want to take advantage of an in-person instruction option or to, as personally they want to continue, uh, their child remain virtual. So, it does give that parent the option to choose which direction they would like to go rather than, uh, us if we're totally virtual. The force is made for everyone to be virtual, but if we do open for in-person, that, and, and also provide virtual, it does allow the parents to choose what's best for their child.
Okay. But now, would you, would you send your kids back to school?
At the present time, my daughter is attending virtual. But that's a choice that, that's a choice that my wife and I have made this time for my child. But again, each, each parent would have to choose. Again, that was as of right now, uh, and we're still finalizing data coming forward. But obviously, you know, that, that's something that we want to give, this option would give each parent that opportunity to choose for their child what they feel is the best.
Yes, and I feel the same way you do. About your family, I feel the same way about my family.
Yes, sir.
You know, I've had some issues and I would, I wouldn't want for my kid to be out there and they brought it home to me or their mother or their other sibling.
Yes, sir.
I, I understand where you're coming from, but I feel the same way you do.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Akerson.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
This time I would like to call for a vote, uh, and I will yield to you, Ms. Valerie Newt.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Carroll. As I've called on your name, please indicate your vote. Chris Clark.
Uh,
Dennis Edwards.
Uh,
Tim Benton.
Uh,
Gary Rota. Gary Rota. I'll come back to him. Vincent Rousher.
Hey.
Hey.
Gary Roda. Thank you, sir. Vincent Roscher. Mr. Roscher. We'll need you to unmute your microphone, sir.
You're right, sorry about that, all right.
Thank you. Corey Singletary.
Nae.
Alan West.
Ah.
Glenn McCoy.
Nae.
Roger Carroll.
Uh.
Mr. Carroll, you have six yeses and three noes.
Thank you very much, uh, Dr. Akerson, your motion, your recommendation has passed.
Thank you, sir.
At this time, I'll yield to you, Dr. Akerson, um, eleven point oh-two.
Uh, yes, sir, this is a, a action I concern, the approval for middle school spring sports. At the present time, middle school athletics have been temporarily suspended, they have not played this year. Upon discussion with our principals and also, uh, Dr. Heaven Ridge, uh, recently, our principals have asked for the opportunity, uh, for the board to approve and examine playing. To be able to play three outside spring sports, that will be baseball, softball, and soccer. And they will be using the same guidance that's required for our high schools by the North Carolina High School Athletic Association. So tonight, we're requesting the board to approve the middle schools to resume their spring sports as conditions allowed.
Mr. Uh, we don't, we don't talk about this, Mr. Akerson?
I, I moved it when you said the recommendation.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Tim Benton, uh, and a second by Mr. uh, Dennis Edwards to accept, uh, Mr. Ak, Dr. Akerson's recommendation for spring sports. This time, I'll open it up for discussion, I yield to you, Mr. Roden.
Mr. Carroll.
Yes, sir, I yield the floor to you.
Has our football team at West Blade, nobody going to practice there?
Uh, no, sir, uh, Mr. Mr. Roden, they are still out, um, and I think that it's through the sixteenth of February, so that'd be next week, they would be able to resume workouts and competition on the seventeenth.
Uh, give us something like football. I mean, it's a contact sport like football and.
And, 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 Mr. Roden, clarify, this was something our, our middle school principals and Dr. Heaven Ridge and I, we had a meeting after a recent principal's meeting. This is something they wanted to request, they would have the option to play if conditions were conducive for that. At, at the present, the, they are, they are temporarily suspended at middle school play. So they were asking if the board would allow them the option, uh, to play those sports if conditions allowed. Uh, for middle school to play baseball, softball, and soccer, all three outside sports. And that they would, uh, obviously want to follow the same guidelines at the high school sports, and those same areas would do in terms of what is required for safety protocols for COVID nineteen.
I have a question. Are they going to play just within the county or is it going to be Columbus and Bladen County?
I think at present, they are scheduled to play Columbus County schools as of now, again, that's going to be contingent of what, what Columbus is doing. Uh, we will, we can revisit those schedules, take a look, that is something that, uh, the board could also consider to only restrict it just to Bladen County schools. Or you could play Bladen and Columbus, but I believe, uh, they are presently scheduled to play the Columbus County schools on paper, uh, at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Sir. Any more discussion? We can provide a copy of those schedules, I'll get those, uh, if the board approves tonight this option, uh, for them to, uh, play. And I believe these sports will start in March, we can provide the board members with a copy of those schedules as well. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Any more discussion? I yield to you, Ms. Valerie.
Thank you, Mr. Carroll, as I call your name, please indicate your vote. Chris Clark.
Uh.
Dennis Edwards.
Uh.
Tim Benton.
Uh.
Gary Roda.
Nae.
Vincent Roscher.
Uh.
Corey Singletary.
Nae.
Alan West.
Uh.
Glenn McCoy. But could you repeat your vote, please, sir? It didn't matter, thank you, sir. Roger Carroll.
Uh.
Mr. Chairman, you have seven yeses and two noes.
Thank you very much, um, Dr. Akerson, your, uh, approval was accepted by the board for middle school spring sports.
Thank you, Chairman Carroll.